You know, it's a state, we have to leave the doors open and people coming out.
It's more like a spin.
It's not much.
It's a little bit of a go in there.
So, thanks for handling that.
I was chair of the school board, I'll never be the chair again.
Yes.
You're welcome.
What did you get this week?
I'm tired. Don't pay him for today. I wanted to come to this, but uh.
Have you realized today?
The double thing.
Did you get your thoughts on that?
The double thing.
I want to hire one too.
Yeah, I was like, where's AJ and Martin? I was like, I don't see you, but I got you, I got you.
I got two elbows.
Can you get the elbow or your head?
Yeah. I was just like, I didn't see him. My heat is as much, pretty efficient.
Should you want your space?
No, actually it's. We'll just chitchat and brush.
Is there anything or bad day?
Aren't you excited? One thing after another. I think so, I feel that. Yeah, after he's done.
How do you wanna do it? No.
Oh yeah, a while ago.
It's great, I don't know, looks good.
All right. All right, uh, let's call the meeting to order. Tiffany, please take the role.
Councilwoman Garvey present, Councilwoman Workla.
Councilwoman Workla.
Present.
Councilwoman Brennan.
Present.
Councilwoman Harjo.
Present.
Present. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. Uh, and before we go down to anything, I would like to, uh, make a change to the, the agenda tonight. I'm gonna pull executive session. And then I'd like to pull item ten on the consent agenda with the council. So, so move.
Chair.
Here. Councilman Harjo.
I'm making motion to pull executive session and, uh, pull consent item ten.
Sorry. Before I do that, um, is there any other adjustments to the council agenda? All right, um, with, uh, motion and second, I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Garvey.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brennan.
Hi.
Councilwoman Workla.
Hi.
Councilman Harjo.
Hi.
All right. Okay, um, we're gonna run down to, uh, recognized persons in the audience. Purpose of this agenda is to provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council members that are not listed on this current agenda and are within the subject of jurisdiction and the municipal perio of the city. Comments may not involve personnel matters, legal disputes, or private non-municipal affairs of the constituency regarding, sorry, comments regarding zoning and land issues, uh, may only be made during properly noted public hearings. Would anybody like to get up and speak? Okay, we're gonna go down to conflict of that. Go ahead, Tiffany.
I have a question. You know, it says here, uh, an opportunity, uh, currently not on the current agenda, the frequency change is on the, uh, agenda, that we have an opportunity to speak at that time.
Uh. Yeah, I've, I haven't fixed it yet. Uh, been a little under the weather. Uh, you can address it. It's been brought up by, I don't know, he's always here. So, address your concern right now. Uh, yeah, so address it now.
Do I have to address it now, or can I address it as part of the discussion?
No, it will not be, so unless it's a public hearing, it isn't, uh, open to the public on an agenda item, so it's appropriate to do it now.
Okay. Ted Thompson, just a couple of comments, and I know you're gonna get presentations, uh, but I wanted to go over a couple of things that were in the packet that was sent to everybody. Um, it, it appeared to me by looking at that information that virtually everyone acknowledges that there is a frequency congestion at the Mountain Home Airport, hundred and twenty-two eight. There's disagreement on whether the frequency should be changed now or later, and I'm not gonna get into that because that's gonna be part of the discussion. And we'll, uh, would like to also say that looking at that material appears to me that there's a very critical item that's not apparent there, and that's exposure. Um, those others who fly daily experience this. Those who do not fly often don't see the nature of the problem. So, they're not exposed to this risk, this very real risk, that there'll be a, a frequency, uh, transmission that is stepped on and missed, that has the potential to lead to catastrophic accident. There also appears to be unanimous, um, agreement that the weather station is causing the problem. Uh, the number was thirteen percent of the transmissions are from that weather station. I would like it turned off. My students are not allowed to use it. I recommended our semi arbitral pilots not use it. There are other sources of weather information that will not jam our frequency. Um, there were, there were also some information there about being on the wrong frequency, uh, after a change can lead to a mishap, and I won't dispute that people on the wrong frequency or in the traffic pattern can cause an accident. Uh, just a month ago, myself and another pilot were flying, and there was a locally based airplane on the wrong frequency that almost ran into another airplane for Boise. And, uh, that's all I've got.
Okay, go down to conflict of interest. A question, has any member received information, came to, or otherwise any contact, any person regarding any items on the city council agenda, so please step forth nature of contact. All right, none? Uh, run down the consent agenda. Is there anything that, uh, council would like to pull, have more clarification on? Other than item ten. Hearing none, do I have a, a motion to approve the consent agenda as spread, that pulling item ten? Here, Councilman Harjo.
Making motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda as printed, the discussion of pulling, um, item ten.
It's been motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing, Councilwoman Workla.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, that's what Ms. DeGee says to me right now.
Thanks.
Um, just help me here. So, it looks like all the citizens had their update made in red. I didn't see that though for number eight on the consent agenda, um, for the Mountain Home Historical Society. Am I missing something there?
Um. I think it's not on there. I'm trying to look.
Hang on, one second.
Thank you.
I don't know why they're not in red.
She, she said that, uh, she has made them, and they, and for some reason she doesn't know why they're in, not in red.
They have the exact same.
Hey, okay, I asked to read through it. I didn't see the changes about the bi-annual reporting and stuff like that as well. So, I just, maybe I got a back copy or something, but I, I, I got through, you know, there weren't, there's nothing highlighted there. I just read through it, and I didn't see anything about the reporting.
Council.
Um, in that case.
Mayor. Councilwoman, the, the language for the historical society on the copy I have in front of me in, in this room, which doesn't help you.
Okay.
Um, has the exact same language as the other agreements do, um.
Okay.
Other than it does reflect MHH S as a historical society. That's the only difference between them all.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Workla.
Hi.
Councilman Harjo.
Hi.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brennan.
Hi.
We'll run down to old business, action item deliberation, such proposal land lease for Melon Water District Council. What do you want to do?
Mayor.
Councilman Harjo.
Um, in reading through the, the updated lease agreement, um, of the updated lease and agreement for that, uh, we have noted the next thirty years, um, as the duration, an initial thirty year lease period, um, throughout, uh, the rent reflects, as the council has requested previously, the start at five point five and a five percent increase, um, through each year of the duration of contract, um, that is all in as we, um, expected. There are some factors that need to be finalized still, uh, the specification of the cost of a meter, um, as we have discussed for that branch of, uh, of our water system. I, I think this captured everything except for those, for those portions. Oh, and it, and, uh, one and a half times current, uh, city water rate took down, um, at the time of the emergency water service request. But according to the notes that I had, I think that covers everything that we discussed in what, uh, what we desired out of updated language. Councilman Brennan?
I have a question, paragraph two, which is, uh, rent amount, the, the final, um, I guess the second half of the final. Um, the sentence of the paragraph says, unless otherwise agreed to in writing. All I might direct at you, um, unless otherwise agreed to in writing by both parties. Good or bad in there, like, I'd like to see it locked in, but I guess that would be.
Sorry, I wasn't following. I'm trying to find it. Well, it sets, um, it sets how the rent will go up year after year. Uh, I think the catch-all, unless otherwise agreed to, is if, uh, both parties recognize that the five percent, uh, is, you know, I'm assuming it's just supposed to be sort of covering the cost of inflation and those types of things. And inflation goes up eleven percent, you know, where you're like, hey, the, again, it creates an illegality if the present citizenry has to subsidize another subdivision. It would make it avoidable as opposed to void contract, and so we would say unless otherwise agreed to by the parties for that. Conversely, if inflation is only one percent, you know, then are we overcharging them for that benefit? So, I like having the catch-all. That's somewhat vague. Um, if it didn't have the five percent written in the sentence preceding that, then I would agree with you that there's, it's a vague mechanism of increasing the rent, but given that there's what the current rent is, how much it goes up per year, but hey, other things happen because of the calculation of how we're doing this now. So, it makes sense. All right, council.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Since we still have the, um, section under seven, the installation of the water meter device, um, shall we just go ahead and keep it under old business? This is an action item. I guess I'm not sure which action we're looking for tonight, since we still have something that need to be finalized.
I, your rest looks great.
May.
Put it.
I, we, I just need the size of meter and the specific type to put in there. That way they can purchase it.
Okay.
Like we, like, that was, that was discussed in the last meeting, and I was still pending that from date. The district has already got this copy to review themselves, um, to proceed with. So, for their sake of DEQ and funding, I think a vote tonight, pending the, the meter size is all I'm seeking.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Okay, well, then I would make a motion to approve the, um, proposed land lease with Melon Water District, um, pending the, uh, water meter. Specs, um, to be inserted once it's fine-wised under, um, paragraph number seven.
Second. It's been motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Councilwoman Garvey.
Hi.
Councilwoman Brennan.
Hi.
Councilman Harjo.
Hi.
Councilwoman Workla.
Hi.
All right, run down to new business, item move consent agenda. There was only one, but it's tabled, so we're gonna run down to, uh, new business, non-action discussion regarding frequency congestion, and I have a AJ Lewis and a Martin Pike coming down. So, it's, um. Councilman Harjo's popped up. Welcome. Nice to see you. It's always good to see you guys.
Thanks for having us.
So, uh, um, I guess we'll, uh, we'll go down here. Whoever wants to start, I guess it's almost soon that's you AJ to start it out.
Yes, sorry, uh, big personality back there. Uh, thank you very much for taking the time out of your busy day to come here with us. Uh, I'm AJ Lewis. I'm a member of your airport advisory committee. I'm here with, uh, Martin Pike. We wanted to talk to you guys about some of the problems that we've been having with the common traffic advisory frequency out of the Mountain Municipal Airport. Uh, next slide, please. All right. As I'm sure is gonna come as complete shock to all of you, uh, for the last six to seven months at the airport advisory committee, most of our conversations have dominated about congestion out at the, uh, CTAP frequency, and whether or not it has gotten to the point where we need to entertain a frequency change for the airport that's operating out of there. Um, we have discussed it at length, and unfortunately, our committee has not been able to come to a unified, common, uh, agreement as to what we think that appropriate sort of action is going. So, we decided that since we are an advisor committee only, what we wanted to do was put this problem in front of you as city council and mayor, who are the airport sponsors, and obviously the decision makers for the city, and see if there was a, a direction that you guys wanted us to run with, and make sure that we got this in front of you, uh, as a safety, uh, mechanism for the fourth that's out there. Next slide, please. Uh, so currently, your airport runs on CTAP frequency one two two point eight. This is arguably the most common, uh, advisory frequency for general aviation airports that exist out there. As such, we have a lot of airports that surround Mountain Home that also use this frequency, and they make it so that when you have an aircraft that's in the pattern at Mountain Municipal Airport, they're hearing traffic calls and radio calls by pilots that are not intended for Mountain Home. So, example, you can have aircraft that's getting ready to depart from our airport, and they're hearing calls from, uh, airports farther away as McCall. Obviously, uh, some of that congestion has led some airport users to feel that it's time to change the frequency so that we can get away, uh, from some of that congestion that's going on out there. Uh, so there are some pros to changing the frequency. If we go to the next slide, please. Oh, sorry. Uh, before we get there, this is just reminder, uh, I'm sure most of you saw it, but there, uh, was a time where I did a frequency analysis out at Mountain Municipal Airport, just to see how great the congestion was going. I monitored, uh, one two two point eight for a period of eight non-consecutive days, and got about a thousand radio calls that occurred over there. I went through each one individually to determine where that radio call was intended to go for and mapped it out, and this is kind of just giving you an idea of where people at Mountain Home are hearing other radio traffic coming from. So, you're getting Ontario, McCall, Gooding, Jerome, Twin Falls, uh, and the two air parks that are in existence between us and Boise that are out there. So, obviously, because of this, these traffics are being out there, you do have those airport users that are suggesting it might be time for the frequency change. The way that our committee decided it would be best to present this to you is in a non-biased manner, where you had, uh, one person who would present the pros for the frequency change, one person who would present the cons for the frequency change, and both of us would be here to answer questions to the best of our ability, should you have any at the end. Uh, Martin decided that, uh, he'll go ahead and represent the pros for the frequency change, so I'll let him talk about, uh, some of the, the reasons why a frequency change would be prudent, and what his thoughts are on it.
Well, we can start off the top of the list, the reduced congestion here at our own local airport. If we don't have to listen to the other surrounding airports, you know, we have our frequency to ourself. If we can get away from the one twenty-two point eight, that will get us off that advisory frequency for the weather, for the weather, and it's, that was a state that took up about thirteen percent of our traffic calls, so that would get that off the thirteen percent of the radio use off the traffic frequency if we would change, we'd get frequency for traffic. And the situational awareness, when you're not having to, when you can listen to only people in your traffic pattern versus the traffic pattern at Jerome and Gooding, which is ones I hear the most. You know, I did, I can keep track better of the people that I'm sharing the pattern with here at Mountain Home. And emergency reliably, reliability for critical, critical situation, that kind of speaks for itself. If you got, if you're on a party line, and you're trying to make a call out, and you can't because someone else has got it tied up, you know, you're kind of stuck. And, uh, some of the things you doesn't have up there is, we do a lot of chatter on our frequency here because we have a lot of training going on here. We have, we have a flight school out the airport now, and they, they're out there a lot, and people come over from, you know, with the helicopters out of, um, Caldwell, and we, I've seen flight schools out of Boise and Napa over here, and they are using our airport, so they increase, you know, our radio frequency, uh, traffic on our radio frequency. So, Jerome and Gooding, they have to listen to us, and I've been on a flight going into Jerome, and I can't talk to a pilot leaving Jerome because I'm, work, I'm competing with Mountain Home. You know, the, the, the radio frequency is crowded with Mountain Home traffic, and I can't talk to the guy coming out of Jerome. I really wanted to talk to him. He did not have the ADS-B where I could see him on my screen, so I knew he couldn't see me, and it would've been really nice to talk to him, and I couldn't do it. I think just being a good neighbor, you know, changing the frequency would help these other airports with craft, craft, uh, frequency congestion, the traffic frequency congestion too, a, uh, it's kind of a two-way street. We help ourselves, but we also help them. And that's what I've got.
Councilman Brennan?
Can I jump in, like, before we go to the other half and ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Um, you mentioned, uh, by changing it, it would be a frequency of our own. It wouldn't be shared by other airports in the area?
From what I understand, the, the frequencies they, uh, have available would be unique to Mountain Home, and we would not be sharing it.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, might be a dumb question. As far as all of our military aircraft here, would it any effect on them of us having a different frequency?
No, because we, we do not talk to them, and, and, uh, you know, the military helicopters that do, do approaches in the Mountain Home, they would just have to go to our frequency.
Can you advertise that on like a NOTAM or something?
It'd be, it'd be on a NOTAM, yes.
And then, again, sorry for the dumb questions. I think of the radio, I'm on the ground all the time, and, uh, the higher altitude I get, the more clarity I have. If your, if your aircraft are on the, are on the runway, are you having the, the congestion there, or do you have to get the aircraft up high in the sky to have the congestion?
It, it does make a difference. Uh, I have been on the ground where I can, you know, can use the line of sight, and, you know, so if I'm on the ground and they're in the air at Jerome, I can hear them talking. If they're on the ground in Jerome, I probably cannot hear them talking, and vice versa. If we're in the air here, they can hear us.
So, the congestion, if I'm hearing you right, the congestion is worse when you're in the sky.
Yes.
Have that.
Right.
The range, I suppose. Okay. And then my, my question for the military thing is more specific, I guess, was if we have a aircraft starting to enter like controlled airspace or whatever, um, their tower, as you wrote, can, can, can know our frequency and say, get out of here without having to like slow down the process?
The procedure separating general aviation aircraft from military aircraft would not be affected, but it wouldn't change at all. It, it would still, it would be transparent to the military, and safety would not be degraded at all.
That's all for now.
Um, all right, next slide, please. So, we'll jump into some of the other sides of the argument. Um, one of the biggest one is that there is a period of adaptation if we do a frequency change. There are risks where, uh, some pilots may come in using the old Unicom frequency, even though we have a new one published, either because they're using outdated charts, they're unfamiliar with the area, uh, there's a variety of reasons where they come in. Obviously, you can imagine that would create a safety issue in and of itself if you have aircraft operating on one frequency, thinking they're talking aircraft on the ground, but they're actually on a separate frequency, and you're kind of running two frequencies simultaneously. Uh, so there is an adaptation period that must be considered when we run into that. Um, there's a lot of, uh, the request for the FAA in and of itself to make a frequency change doesn't cost anything, but there is a small cost that will be associated with it. You do have signage out of the airport that dictates what the Unicom frequencies are. Those will have to be updated. Any, uh, mention of the Unicom frequencies up at the city website, or papers that you hand off to anybody building hangars, any of that literature would also have to be updated and scrubbed to make sure that it is most accurate. Uh, you wouldn't want to create a situation where the city is advertising old Unicom frequency on a new Unicom frequency, and that could, uh, uh, cause a problem. Obviously, it does require some B time with the FAA. Um, it doesn't just happen instantaneously. You would have to injure it to them, and during that time, things will operate just as they continuously are. Uh, right now, one of the bigger ones that we're talking about is there's a possibility of congestion on the new frequency. So, um, the goal is to get a Unicom frequency that would be specific to Mountain Home and Mountain Home traffic only. If they wanted to do that, there's no guarantee that we would be able to do that. The FAA would have to do a frequency analysis and determine which one is best based on where we are, which frequencies are available. Um, there was a spectrum analysis done, can't, I want to say MIT, I don't remember for sure. I will find the study and I'll email it to you at the end of this, um, to determine. There's something like nine to twelve really usable, common, uh, CTAP frequencies that are available throughout the US, so finding one that won't approach on somebody else would have to be done, and then there is, of course, the problem with, uh, some people might not like the new frequency that's going on. It's trivial, but it's a, a factor that's out there. The best way that I can equate it is imagine we're all Idaho residents, we all have phones with air. It's trivial, but it's a, a factor that's out there. The best way that I can equate it is imagine we're all Idaho residents, we all have phones with area code two oh eight. And all of a sudden Idaho implements a second area code and you end up with a eight six four area code while everybody else has two oh eight. It doesn't really mean anything, but it is kind of irritating. It should have a separate frequency. So you could end up with one of these weird CTAP frequencies that has some like dot zero seven five three uh trailing number either. Uh, the last one is uh, there is some concern that it may cause increased workload for overflight traffic. What I mean by that is imagine you have an aircraft that's flying the entire southeast corridor of Mount of Idaho and they're en route to Utah and they're passing all of these airports. So they're passing the air parks that are out there by Boise, they're passing over Mountain Home, they're passing over Jerome, they're passing over Gooding on their way to Utah. Right now, they can dial up one two two point eight and they can listen to traffic from every single aircraft, from every single airport en route that they may be a factor with and not have to make multiple frequency changes throughout there. Putting that uh one frequency change in the middle does increase workload for pilots as they're transitioning to southeast corridor of Idaho, if that makes sense. These are just some of the cons that uh that we came up with. Do you have any specific questions about those?
So, go ahead, uh counsel and work left.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to ask for, you gave the example of, so before you pick up a phone and you call a number and the area started to change, um you don't do like a pre-flight or a pre-check list before you dial a phone number, right? So as a pilot, is that checking out in part of your pre-flight planning?
One thousand percent, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mistakes happen.
So my, my only question is, is so if I'm flying, which I don't, um from Quinn to Ontario, they all have the same frequency?
Not every airport. Just in the, in the southeast corridor of Mountain Home that we're talking about, all those airports that you saw on the chart, they all had that same frequency. Every airport doesn't all have the same UNICOM frequency. They do try to do a spectrum, a spectrum separation where they make it so that you don't have too much congestion going on in one area, but it's inevitable in a small area like this where you will have multiple airports operating on the same frequency. Some pilots like that as it enables them to minimize their workload while they're in flight.
Okay. And then the airport manager from, let's say Jerome, uh Quinn, uh Ontario, A A Caldwell. The, I, I remember seeing something in our packet, not our packet, but um that they're all the consensus. It doesn't need to be changed or it does? Never should be correct.
Um, as we get into the presentation, I do bring up some of the uh extended research that members of the advisory committee did and some of the talking. Um, let's get to it real quick, just to simply answer your question.
Well, then, well, then I'll be quiet and listen, keep doing your presentation. I'm sorry, AJ.
No, no, not at all. It's
Counsel Brett, um, you, you mentioned about uh, there's no guarantee of what uh frequency we would get. Can you do that analysis before the city decides to make the switch to see how private that frequency would be or how congested it might be?
I don't know. We would have to reach out to the FAA to initiate the spectrum analysis. And we can talk to them about what that entails and whether or not we can figure out what their UNICOM frequency would be, what they would recommend over going there. Next slide please. Uh, in your packet, I sent you a bunch of NTSB reports, National Transportation Safety Boards, about real world uh consequences and risk that happen uh with frequency changes or lack thereof. Uh, this was just an attempt to kind of highlight to you the real world risk that is associated with any action that you may take. Aviation, like any other safety organization, is always trying to mitigate our risk as low as we can, which you'll never be able to get at zero. These examples from Dunkirk, New York, uh Florida and more Florida um all represent times where uh frequency congestion or a frequency misuse represented uh either a mishap as a secondary cause or uh created a midair collision. So the first one, you had a pilot that was coming in immediately after the airport had changed frequencies. They had decided that they wanted to get away from the one that they were using and go to one that was more specific to that airport. A pilot was using outdated GPS, came in on the wrong frequency and ended up flipping wings with another aircraft on the runway. Uh, the other one there at the end, Dillon, Florida, um Amber Riddle, uh Aeronautical University is kind of in the area. They had been for years after the city council to change the frequency because they felt that it was too congested. Um, shortly after they petitioned the city to do that, there was an incident where a pilot missed a call because of frequency congestion and it resulted in a midair collision between those aircraft to a north. Uh, while that wasn't the primary cause of the crash, uh the CTAP frequency congestion was noted as a uh secondary contributing factor for that thing. Those are just an attempt to highlight to you the risk associated of either action that you decide to take, leave the frequency the same, change it. There is risks associated with that. Next slide.
Did, did McCall change their frequency and then change it back to where it was?
I'm not sure about McCall. I know uh in here we talked about it, Gooding uh at one point changed their frequency. Uh, they wanted to get away from, I think it was with Jerome is what their airport manager said. And then like it may ended up going back. They were more worried about the safety implications of staying on the new frequency than going back to the other one. Um, going back to the analysis that I did at other airports, this would just kind of give you try to uh, a comparison, an apple apples comparison to a real world frequency change that had taken place. Up until twenty twenty-two, Caldwell and Napa had shared UNICOM frequencies. They were hearing traffic from both airports. But they had grown so much that Caldwell decided they were going to change their frequency and get on there because it was just too uh congested for them to do. So to kind of give you an example of when they felt that change was appropriate, I did this uh straight line propagation where I took the eight days that I had monitored and I calculated out the median time a pilot spent on the radio speaking, which was about eight seconds. I then went to the terminal area forecast for the FAA and I extrapolated out for twenty twenty-two, the total annual operations. And then I used the formula that in your packet to just convert those to hours to find out based on the number of operations, how many projected annual airtime hours you would have at an airport. So just to give you an example, Caldwell had a hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-three total operations reported for twenty twenty-two. And if you use the formula, it goes to about three hundred and twenty-eight point five eight annual airtime hours. That's how many times uh pilots were speaking out there. Again, this is a straight line propagation, so it could be more, it could be less. This is just to do a straight line uh comparison to all airports. Just to put that in perspective, Mountain Home itself only had seventeen thousand operations and that resorted in just under forty hours of total annual airtime operations. What that means is Mca- uh Napa and Caldwell together had just under five hundred total annual airtime hours for the operations that they had uh put in there. If you add up everything uh from all the other airports with McCall, Gooding, Jerome, Buell and Ontario, the total airtime hours is only two hundred and seventy-four. So all those airports together just come to a little bit over half of when the annual airtime hours at Caldwell and Napa reached the point where the city, they decided they needed to diminish their frequencies. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, it's very important that I reiterate at this time, the FAA has no benchmark or threshold at which they require a city to change their UNICOM frequency. That is largely left at the discretion of the airport sponsor and the airport end users when they feel that there's a safety issue that may require a frequency change. So just because Napa and Caldwell waited until they got to up almost five hundred annual airtime hours doesn't mean that we can't do it later, we can't do it sooner. It's just to give you a benchmark of something that happened in southern Idaho of when other neighboring airports decided they had reached the point where they need to change frequencies. Any questions about that? Next slide please. I believe this is what you were talking about, Mayor. As part of this presentation, some of our members went out and they spoke to other airport managers about the frequency issues. Um, Gooding and Ontario are two airports that you can hear from Mountain Home. So specifically, they were, uh, the airport managers were asked about that. Uh, Mr. Andy Woods, the airport manager for Ontario, said he saw no significant issues with frequency congestion. He thought the greater challenge would be um according to different users, your BLM, single-engine air taxis, your helicopters, your corporate desks, I think. And then Mr. Dale Thompson from Gooding uh reported he had no significant frequency congestion concerns. They're the ones I think you were talking about, Mr. Mayor. They did try the uh frequency change and they did not like it. They reverted back because they felt that there was some safety issues there with being on the other frequency. Uh, and so they went back to the other one. He emphasized more common sense radio usage or something like that. Next slide please. So through all of our uh back and forth, these are kinds of the three scenarios that we envisioned um presenting to you guys and seeing if you had an appetite just to see one over the other. Uh, the other one was to continue leave the free uh CTAP frequency as it is today. Continue to monitor or revisit it at a later time, maybe four or five years down the road to see if our airport has grown any or congestion has gotten any worse where we need to. We can certainly revisit as we need to. The other one is of course to reach out to the FAA and request a frequency change. And then the third one, uh, that was kind of hit on uh during the three-minute conversation period was installing a new automated weather uh observation system, the AWAS. Uh, next slide please. Just to kind of give you an idea of what we're talking about with that. Out of those almost one thousand uh radio transmissions from the analysis that I did, one hundred and twenty-seven of them were uh attributed to mic clicking on the radio. Don't know if you know this, but mic clicking on the radio, three clicks is usually used to either activate a weather recording system so the pilots can get the weather at the airport they're intending on doing, or they can use it to adjust airport uh lighting, anything like that. Uh, that's a very simplified version of what's going on. So the thought is, since you have almost thirteen percent of the, the traffic that we, or the radio traffic that I had observed being attributed to clicking, if we had our own automated weather service that had its own frequency, you could take thirteen percent of the clicking off of the one two two point eight frequency, have aircraft do all their weather checks on that frequency, and that would alleviate some of the congestion from our, our normal frequency for airborne operations for aircraft. Reach out to J U B just to pull some numbers for you if that was something that you wanted to be interested in. The cost of the new AWAS system would be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The FAA does have uh the ability to fund ninety percent of that, the city coming in ten percent. Uh, there is an annual maintenance and testing agreement that would be about six thousand five hundred dollars per year and you can estimate approximately two thousand dollars for maintenance and parts. Useful life of an AWAS is about fifteen years and the FAA would expect the city of Mountain Home to maintain the system for the entirety of that fifteen-year period.
Mayor, Council Brett, for the grant match, Chris, is that something that uh is already part of our equation or is that a whole different grant?
This would be all new.
It would be all new in addition to what we get. Okay, thank you.
Next slide please. Alright, so those were our three basic uh areas of thought of what we want to do, either leave the frequency this, uh, where it is down, kind of revisit, monitor to see if congestion actually does get worse, uh to go ahead and pursue a frequency change with the FAA, or possibly explore the installation of an AWAS system. Um, before Martin and I uh take any of your questions, I could have two things that I wanted to address just real quick as you guys make the decision. I know that this is a non-action item, so you guys aren't making a decision tonight, but just to kind of put that out there. Uh, it is not lost on us that you guys have been inundated with texts, emails, phone calls and in-person conversations regarding the CTAP frequency out of Mountain Home. There are a lot of people that have a lot of experience and education uh in this area and they've made their voices heard. Good on them. That is fantastic. Uh, I know that there have been some continuations that failure to decide to go one way or the other is because of somebody's either lack of concern of safety or personal vendetta. And I would just like to say that everybody I've spoken to, everybody on the committee has nothing but aviation safety first and foremost in their mind. If there is a disagreement on one end, it is because they legitimately think that that is the best way to go. Nobody in this wants to prove a point by having a midair collision. Uh, everybody is uh addressed with safety. Uh, the last thing I, I would like to say is I know that there is a lot of people that have brought the real world consequences to you about what could happen with a frequency change or without a frequency change. I myself included the NTSB reports to you. I just would like to remind everybody on the council, you are not responsible for a midair collision that may happen at the airport or to aircraft having a thing like this. You guys are the decision makers, but the pilots are ultimately responsible for their aircraft and for the decisions that they make as a pilot in command for that aircraft. So as you're making your decisions, please don't think that there's going to be a midair collision out there tomorrow and you guys will be blamed somehow. You guys are not responsible for that. Um, and with that, I would just open up any questions you may have for Martin and yourself.
May.
Counsel, one more.
Um, although I won't, I won't be here much longer, I, I really kind of like to hear a little bit more about the, the AWAS. Um, being that FAA would fund ninety percent of it, uh, and it sounds like, I just, I just briefly Googled it because I am not a pilot. I don't know if I ever be because I can't see, but um, it just sounds like, it sounds like something uh that it really won't cost the city a lot of money. Um, and if you can eliminate, even uh, even say it's, it's thirteen percent, but if you can eliminate that and it will add efficiency to um our wins, e- everything else, I don't, that seems like a win-win situation overall.
I do, I do know you would not be the only person that would be excited about this. There are a lot of people that would.
Yeah, I would love to, I'd love to hear a little bit more about that avenue.
Yeah. There are, there are advantages to having the AWAS system. We have, um, how many approaches do we have? We have two approaches, instrument approaches into Mountain Home. And if they had, had weather at Mountain Home, they're allowed to get descend to a lower decision altitude. And if they got to get their weather to Mountain Home Air Force Base in Boise, they cannot descend as low. So would make those approaches more friendly or usable in bad weather? So there's, so there's an advantage to having the AWAS.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I don't know if this is, it, it, I, I, I don't know that this is exactly the answer, but I think even so, even if this isn't even the answer, if there is a funding mechanism that will fund ninety percent of this and it's, it's overall more safety, or what is it saying? It's improved safety increases operational efficiency, efficiency. Uh, why not?
No, I, I, I don't know what the budget is for Mountain Home. It's, I can't, I can't ask you to spend one we don't have.
In our C I P for the future. So, um, the other thing that I kind of just, uh, thank you, AJ, for saying, you know, cause so that we can sleep at night that if something happens because this is not an easy decision, especially because I, speaking for just myself here, I'm not in the aviation industry. I have no idea. And yes, we haven't inundated with the emails, but um, just looking over everything, I mean, you know, the pros definitely outweigh the cons, but um, I think it's, it's a work in progress and I appreciate, I appreciate this presentation because it, it spells it out in a way that um for myself is easy to understand. So I appreciate it. But I like the negative AWAS.
Yes, sorry. So Toby, um, our funding mechanism right now, it's, it's, it's being utilized for the current projects currently, right?
Yes, sir.
So next year's funding mechanism, so what was it, thirty-five thousand dollars? What's the chances of the, the FAA funding the ninety percent? Is that like a two-year, three-year timeline? We have to get that off to the FAA for the AWAS system?
Yeah, currently we have a FY twenty-six project already programmed. Um, so it would be out at the earliest twenty-seven.
Mayor. Okay.
Uh, we currently have twenty, we actually have the next six years spoken for. That doesn't mean they can't be moved. Uh, but probably the earliest would be twenty-seven. And I did want to caveat something on the funding. The FAA only provides funding for the initial install. So annualized, the city would be on the hook for just under eleven thousand dollars a year for fifteen years. If you annualize that over fifteen years. From a budget and purpose.
Okay. I think eleven thousand dollars is a um small portion to uh improve our airport, which we are, we've been working diligently to improve um with the land that we've um acquisitioned and so I think that's a small improvement and something for the force here.
Counsel Brett.
Hang on one, hang on one second, counsel and counsel Brett.
I'd like to seek clarification on my earlier question with what Toby said is, um, I asked about this being like, is it new and additional money that the city can receive or it's, it's a new project that we have to fund within the money we're receiving?
Yes, we would have to replace an existing project on your capital for the plant with the AWAS. So
Not additional grant.
So I believe in twenty-seven, we're looking at replacing the runway lighting out there that's starting to age. So that would get pushed back in order to insert the AWAS.
And then um sticking to the AWAS conversation, um, you mentioned um the clicking. I don't know much about that. I've heard the three click thing turns on the lights. Um, is it, is that separating like the thirteen percent is, is seven percent doing weather station and six is doing like clicks to turn on the light?
For what I monitored, there's no way to know.
No way to know that.
Typically, turning on the runway lights would be at night operation, you know, after sundown. And we, I mean, we, I, I know we have them out there, but this, not much. Most, most VFR pilots, you know, don't go up and, you know, fly around at night, you know?
The analysis did cover twenty-four hours for each eight, uh, eight days that we did. Again, they were non-consecutive, so it did include some night operations. I, I didn't, I could go back through and look at what specific parts were at night and which ones weren't. I just attributed them all to clicking.
Okay. So if, if we, if we were to get the new AWAS frequency, um, will pilots continue to do the three clicks on the current? um, will pilots continue to do the three clicks on the current?
We would take it over to a different, to the AWAS frequency. They would have its own separate frequency.
So, so the we, the, I'm, I might be giving you, the weather frequency will also control the lights on that?
You can hear the weather and the clicking on one-two-two-point-eight now.
Now.
I mean, AWAS would have its own dedicated frequency that pilots could go in, and they could take that clicking with them to a different frequency, so you weren't hearing it on the one where airborne operations were being.
Just for weather though?
Yes.
And then those who need to turn on the lights will stay on the current frequency. Only, only weather routes.
That's what understanding is, that's the way I understand it.
Look at Tom too, he's still being out of town. So, hang on, hang on one second, Council, Councilwoman Worklove?
Yeah, hi, is there a Mr. Mahoney with us tonight?
Yes.
Idaho Department, okay. Um, yeah, 'cause we received an email that he's going to be there tonight. Is he able to, and I'm sorry, I can't cite faces with names, I'm not sure if you spoke or not, but is he able to um give his two cents, um, since we received a, an email from him stating that he'd be happy to give us an insight?
Absolutely, come on down. Can you, can you put it really quick, hang on a second, uh, just a little, any other further questions for, for Martin or, or AJ?
Appreciate the, the.
Thank you for your time.
Dude, you, you crushed it, you gave us a lot of information, so I can't believe how many hours you probably put into this, but thank you. Alright, Mr. Mahoney's uh up front live for you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman McCall, thank you very much for the transition, uh, Mayor Sykes, uh, thank you for the introduction, and I just have to applaud those two guys, uh, Martin and AJ, they did a super job for that. Um, and I would like to follow up on some of your questions, especially you, Councilman Brennan. Um, so before I do that though, let me introduce uh myself, uh, Tom Mahoney. I first bought a house here in nineteen eighty-nine. Uh, I sold it in ninety-two, moved away for about ten years with the Air Force, came back to Boise in two thousand and one, and uh, I've been flying, well, let's see, when I showed up here, I was a private pilot, but I did my instrument rating, uh, commercial rating, uh, flight instructor, and instrument flight instructor ratings, all of them at Mountain Home Airport. That was all back eighty-nine to ninety-two. Came back in two thousand and one, I ran an instructor in the Ponderosa Aero Club, which is the biggest aerial club uh in the state. I've come down here quite a bit, went down for about twenty-some years. And for the past two and a half years, I've been the administrator for the Division of Aerobatics, which is part of the transportation department. So I'm a state employee, responsible for aviation within the state. Um, and so I know a lot about Mountain Home, I'm very happy to be back here. Uh, we actually come down here and train, even our state airplanes come down here at times, um, just because uh it's easier than trying to fly up in Boise. Um, real quickly, I've got a few slides, I'll go through those, and then I'd like to come back to some of the questions and just to clarify uh some of the answers. So at least give them my two cents on, on what I think. So the first slide there is kind of ugly, and I'll apologize, I'm not a professional PowerPoint guy, I put some stuff together, but. Down in this slide there, Councilwoman Worklove, I'm, I'm apologize, but what I've got up here is a graph that just basically shows the last three years. So in gold there is the ADS-B, so what does that mean? That's the GPS trackers that we carry, carry around in airplanes, and they report out your position. It doesn't capture all the airplanes that are in the area, but uh, this is through a, a web service called FlightAware, which a lot of us use. And uh, the gold one there is from uh two years ago, and it basically shows kind of a level pattern there. The dark blue line shows a slightly higher trend, that would be last year, and then the light blue line is the one on, or light, yeah, light blue on top is this year, and you'll see it stops in September, which is when one of my guys pulled the data. But you can see there's definitely a trend going up over time. And so a lot of this discussion on radio frequencies started actually a couple of years ago, and you can see what's happened in the past two years, which is the amount of traffic is definitely going up. Um, in fact, if you go look at the last week that's shown in this chart, the traffic at Mountain Home is two and a half times what it was two years ago. Uh, next slide please. Uh, very quickly, this is a slide from the Boise Airport. I gave this to our Air Knox Advisory Board to go quarterly meeting, and gave this last uh week. Um, and this comes from the Boise Airport Director. And twenty-twenty there on the left is um, you know, the COVID year, so that one's a little bit off, but you can see the trend, and on the right in the green block there, it shows an eighty-one percent increase of the last ten years, the number of passengers, and that can relate right back to the number of airplanes that are flying. Uh, next slide. Not only is the traffic at Boise growing, but there also, we have two runways up there, and the last couple of years, we have not had two runways for about seven to eight months out of the year, 'cause I've been working on changing the runways and making them safer. And this slide just shows that for the next couple of years, in fact Toby can probably back me up, um, with some of the engineering analysis of this, but there's a lot going on at the Boise Airport. So uh, over the next two years, they're working on the north runway. We initially thought it was going to be a pretty easy fix, but they got into doing the research on it, and they figured out that the structure beneath the runway is not as good as it ought to be, so that has turned into a seventy million dollar project that's going to take a couple of years. Um, so that's going to go on for a long time. Uh, next slide, then two years from there out, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, they're going to work on the south runway, which is in pretty good shape, but they're going to move it, uh, they call it a realignment, but really they're just sliding at two thousand feet, and they're going to move it two thousand feet closer, actually closer to Mountain Home, closer to the east, so they can line up those two runways. But what does that mean overall? That means for the last two years and now for the next four years, Boise has one runway um, for the period from about April till right about now. In fact, they just opened uh the second runway last week, only on for the first time in six months. Um, what does that mean in Mountain Home? That means that there's no training going on in Boise. Or if there is, it's in the middle of the night, and that's pretty rare. So, a lot of the traffic, like the Ponderosa Aero Club, I used to do lots of training in Boise. We no longer do that. We used to go to Napa, Caldwell, they're so busy, we typically don't go there anymore. Where do we go? Mountain Home, Gooding, Jerome, might go to Hammett, other places like that. But Mountain Home is becoming increasingly popular with Boise, um, having as many restrictions as it has. Next slide please. This is kind of an eyeball photo here, but this is the Silverhawk Aviation Academy out in Caldwell. And you might say, well, why do I care about Caldwell? Because they're on a different frequency. But about half of that operations associated with uh fixed wings. So the helicopters stayed in Caldwell, but the fixed wing went to Ontario, Oregon. And in fact, they bought the uh fixed base operator out there. And so their fixed wing operation is primarily over in Ontario, which is the same frequency as Mountain Home, and it's within line of sight. So, you know, maybe not from the ground, but certainly from the air. Um, you can be talking to all the airplanes associated with half of those people. Next slide, I think this is my last one, and this is the one that basically got me invited to this meeting. In the spring, I drew this up, this is a flight planning software that many of the pilots will use, and I just drew this up, um, and it comes back to a comment AJ made about when you do over flights, you can just tune your radio to one frequency and just stay on that frequency. And so if you were to stay on Mountain Home's frequency and make that flight right there, uh, on the upper left, that's Ontario and Weezer, and on the bottom right, uh, Gooding and Jerome, but you can do that whole flight and never change your radio. But what does that mean? That also means that you get to listen to all five airports um when you're in the air. And it's, it is congested. Um, I will talk, a couple of things, one of the things we'll talk about congestion is, let's say after Mayor Sykes, I want to talk to you, and I don't allow the people talking, right, it's just going to be you and me talking back and forth, that's fine. But if there's a big conversation going on, not only could our conversation um be restricted, but I might get so busy trying to think through all these voices that I don't do something I should do. A friend of mine, about ten years ago now, the Ponderosa Aero Club, is flying in Caldwell, very busy, this is back in Caldwell, Napa, we're on the same frequency, so much chatter on the radio. He was a commercial, training to be a commercial pilot, and he forgot to put his gear down, and he crashed an airplane because he got so busy with all the radio talk and everything. His mind was just so preoccupied with all that, he just forgot a very basic thing in his airplane. So, there's multiple effects. Uh, likewise, as an instructor, I would tell you, one of the hardest things to do as an instructor is I want to talk to my student, and I can't, because there's radio communication going on. If I could just have a quiet environment, maybe I could talk a little bit more, maybe my student could think a little bit, be a task attribute by listening to all these radios, especially when they're not, you know, at the airport that they're at. Um, I just want to summarize a couple of things here, um, and a few key takeaways that I wanted to make. Um, one is basically the population of Idaho has grown, as you well know. There's a pilot shortage, uh, that's slowly being resurrected, but there's a lot more pilot training going on now than there used to be. Boise's one runway that I talked about. Bottom line is, there's a lot more traffic at Mountain Home in the last couple of years than we've seen. I mean, when I trained back in eighty-nine to ninety-two, there was nobody else. I mean, I never heard anybody from Gooding or Jerome or whatever, it was very quiet, and that's certainly not the case anymore. Um, the FAA recognized this, this is, this problem we're talking about tonight has happened around the United States, uh, you know, decades before now. It's just now catching up with Idaho. Um, and so what did the FAA do? AJ mentioned the radio frequencies, um, and to come back to uh the question about whether we get our own? Probably not. Uh, the FAA designated instead of one, they had frequency one-twenty-two-point-eight, that was the original, and then they came up with two others, Napa got one, Caldwell got the other one. So they had three for quite a while, and now they've added four more. So there's seven total frequencies. There's a couple of them that are available that there's no other place close, but we're not probably going to get our own frequency. But the high likelihood is, you would rarely hear anybody else. So, I think I'm pretty comfortable with whatever we come up with. Um, and by the way, you would work with the FCC, uh, Federal Communication, Communication, along with the um, uh, FAA on that. Um, so one of the pros of doing this switch, first of all, increase in safety. Um, we talked a little bit about, AJ, I was glad he brought up the liability. Um, it's funny, when exposure first came up earlier in this meeting, my first thought went to liability. Um, the city of Mountain Home does have a little bit of liability. I mean, there's been plenty of documented uh talk now about this issue, and if two airplanes ran together and a contributing factor was congestion on the radio, you can guarantee that you will be at the federal level lawsuit, guaranteed. Not me personally, but the city would serve you, at least I would expect it. Um, could they win on that? Yeah, I don't know, probably not, it's still a strong argument, but I think there is some exposure there. Uh, one of the cons, I really appreciate what AJ and Martin did. They put up five pros, five cons, but I will tell you, the relative weight of those is significantly different. There's a whole lot of benefits to switching the frequencies, and those reasons for not switching are mostly immaterial or really small. So I wouldn't worry too much about those. Um, to come back to a few questions here, um, just going to read my notes real quick. Uh, over flights, uh, the one-twenty-two-point-eight, I'm glad there was a question about uh that, about if you overfly, can you just stay on one frequency? Well, the truth of the matter is, there are some airports on one-twenty-two-point-eight, there's a lot more on one-twenty-two-point-nine. So it's actually a mix, and you're actually better off, and the FAA encourages people to not just monitor those frequencies, but to go ahead and talk to Mountain Home Approach, to talk to Salt Lake Center, and do what we call VFR flight followings. You actually get radar flight following, that's actually a better procedure. So, is it easier? Yeah, you could monitor one-twenty-two-point-eight, but it's really not that big a deal. Um, I really appreciate the NTSB reports that were given, but I think that's a little bit of Wizard of the Oz kind of look at things, because those accidents are kind of, they're representative, they happened, but do they really apply? Well, yes, occasionally, you know, people will forget to change their frequency, but what's not shown in those NTSB reports is the accidents that were prevented by having third communications. So, yes, we can share pick a few accidents, but really, if we have our own dedicated frequency, not for congestion, you'll save accidents, and you won't see a report like that. So you don't really see the other side of that. Um, it's funny, the uh Ontario-Gooding Airport managers, um, I know uh Dale Thomas is over at Gooding, great guy, he knows what he's talking about, and neither one of those airports have a problem. And you're right, because they're so far apart. One of them is way to the east, one of them is way to the west, and they don't hear each other. But Mountain Home, who's in the middle, does hear them. So Mountain Home has an issue that those two airports don't have. So it's an interesting perspective. Um, on the AWAS, uh, I'm glad Toby chimed in a little bit on the CIPs. And by the way, my job is um, uh, the guy who works for me does grants. Um, so that's in my office where we distribute the, uh, the FAA will provide ninety percent, but that other ten percent gets split usually between the local municipality, the airport sponsor, and then the state. So that all flows through my office, and we work with the FAA to figure out those grants. Um, Toby's right, the next six years are basically all planned out, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't change, and they change all the time. So the next year or two are probably fairly fixed, but I would say year three, four, five, something like that, we could look at it. Um, is it a fixed amount? Yes, but you know, the FAA can also tweak things a little bit, so we can certainly try. Um, one point I want to clarify on that AWAS. What you have today is a very basic weather system that's not certified by the FAA. It's just nice information to have. If you're going to shoot an instrument approach in a Mountain Home, you, Mountain Home Municipal, you have to get the Air Force bases out of timber setting, because that's um approved for use by the FAA. If you want to get the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar AWAS, that's a completely different deal. Um, there's a huge advantage to that, in that when you shoot those two instrument approaches, you can go down to lower weather moons, and the benefit to Mountain Home is uh live flight, medical things. If you're doing medical evacu, evacuations on a really bad weather day, it's kind of nice for those medevac airplanes to be able to land in lower conditions. So that would be really nice to have. Um, I will say the FAA probably isn't going to be real excited about funding it, because I don't think you get enough instrument traffic in here to justify spending that much money. But I don't know, we, we won't know until we ask the question. So it's worth trying. There are a lot of other cheaper alternatives, by the way, ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, that can do much the same, but they're not FAA certified. Um, and that, that concludes my remarks, and happy to answer any questions that people might have.
We can count on your, your funding uh from your department in three years.
Yeah, I wish, I, I wish I could agree with that, uh, Mayor Sykes, that I really can, but we certainly will try. I've talked to the guy that works for me about this subject and, you know, trying to find money for it. And sometimes the state has extra money, you know, and so we can fund some projects. We're doing, uh, well, it's not approved yet, but we're going to the Transportation Board next month for, for three airports, we'll provide money, um, sometimes as much as seventy-five percent of the cost of the project.
Council, Councilwoman Garvey?
Um, did I hear you correctly, that you don't believe that we would be approved to switch frequencies? Did I hear you correctly when you said that at the beginning?
Councilwoman Garvey, um, I think that's incorrect. What I meant to say was, I think we would be approved.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, and the frequency, it'll be one of the seven frequencies.
Okay.
In fact, I know three of them that won't be, it won't be one-twenty-two-point-eight, and it won't be Napa or Caldwell's frequency, it'll be something else. I did a rudimentary analysis myself, and I found two of them that aren't in use anywhere near here, but somewhat farther than you'll have to look at that. But I, I, I'm ninety-nine percent sure it would be approved.
Okay, okay, I wasn't sure why you ca, okay.
Yeah.
Um, alright, so, um, alright, so that kind of scratched my other question. And I wasn't sure I was cycle, and I guess we'd have to put, to get our long-term plan, but um, I don't disagree. So I, I, I kind of, well, I said before, that the pros outweigh the cons, um, and I know this is a non-action item today, um, and I, I'm not sure what the, where we're looking to go forward. Are we looking just to table this tonight, or discuss it later further? But, um, I mean, I think the way that we're trying to grow our airport, uh, why not?
Think if we could get, um.
I'm looking for some direction. Where, where is the city hoping to go? Somebody's.
So Toby, or Tom, you want to, you want to buy in on this? Because it, AWAS?
The AWAS, I think we should go for. The AWAS, we should definitely go forward as fast as we can.
Okay, well that's, so to me, it's thirty-five K, right? I mean, and if, if Mr. Mahoney's going to fund the thirty-five K, we're, we're all in, you know? So, if we can do that. But I know we have our CIP that we're going to have to look at, because I think the, the lights are pretty important for the pilots as well. And eleven K every year.
That's three hundred and fifty thousand.
Right. You know, thirty-five thousand. Well, no, no, our ten percent, our ten percent, of it. So, and we were talking, that, that the FAA won't fund the thirty-five, the three hundred and fifty thousand this year?
Well, they absolutely won't do it this year. Uh, they look, I would say, Toby would know better than me, but they're probably three, four years out. The next year or two are pretty well locked into their plan. Um, Toby and I both know the key FAA person, her name is Jennifer Schildgen, who works the state of Idaho. Um, we will work with her to figure this out, but it's probably three or four years out before we can do this. And if we do the full-up AWAS, three hundred and fifty thousand, FAA pays nine percent, the state will come in at five percent usually, so that'll come out of my office, so it's even less for it. And uh, I think it makes a lot of sense. I do want to clarify though, the AWAS, as the statistics show, there's only thirteen percent of the problem. So it would be nice to fix that, but the real problem is getting the frequency change. Um, that's what really needs to happen, the AWAS would be nice. Um, Councilman Brennan, just to follow up on one of your questions, you asked about the three clicks, and I forgot to mention this, but, um, and we brought up the night stuff. So typically, if I'm a, a pilot coming in, I'm going to, if we had a separate AWAS frequency, it's a different frequency, I'll change to it, I'll listen to the weather, get that weather. Then I'll switch over to the common frequency, which right now is one-twenty-two-point-eight. And I'll click, and I think in Mountain Home, somebody can correct me, it's probably five clicks to turn on the lights, five or seven, and usually there's a medium setting, high setting, whatever, there's a certain number of clicks, and those will turn on the lights. I would suggest that they're two separate things. Most of that thirteen percent is probably the day ones where people are trying to check the weather. The night ones are not very many, and we tend to not have much congestion at night. So I don't think we really have to worry about it too much. I would argue most of it's given the day.
For weather.
For weather.
Yeah.
Mayor, question?
Yeah, go ahead. Um, if, if we were to go the direction of a whole new frequency.
Yep.
Would, um, with the AWAS? Would, um, would the AWAS then be a priority? If it's a few years out and we could change the frequency relatively quickly, can we keep all of that on the same new frequency and be fine since there's no competition with another airport in here?
Councilman Brennan, I would probably prefer to Toby or even Tom to know how their system is set up. And I think, I, I would change the frequency yesterday, and you just do it and switch both of them over. Or, you know, Mr. Tom, since you guys are just shutting it off, you could certainly do that. I don't frankly find a whole lot of value to it, but a lot of pilots now have a lot of that information provided to them electronically. And so their iPads that they're flying with have a lot of the information already. But to answer your question, yes, I think you can drag both of those on to a new frequency. And I see no reason not to do it sooner rather than later. And it's really, it's a pretty straightforward process. It'd probably take sixty days, ninety days, something like that to work through it. But it doesn't cost hardly anything. It's pretty easy to do. We just did a Caldwell three years, four years ago.
So Tom just wanted to, oh, sorry. Tom, would you jump in and help me with that question?
Well, which one?
If we get a whole new frequency?
Right.
Do we, do we need to separate AWAS?
The AWAS frequency would be different. The, the FAA certified AWAS would have its own frequency. So currently, as a pilot, we are flying along, we would look at our sectional or our foreflight, and it gives us at that airport, U seventy-six or a different airport, it would give you the Unicom frequency and it would give you the AWAS frequency. And you would tune that up, listen to it, get the weather information, and then go back to the other frequency.
Right, but to answer your question, Councilman Brennan, yes, I think we would drag both. In the near term, like if we were to switch the radios tomorrow, you could switch that weather system, which is not a full of AWAS. You could switch that over to the current frequency, right?
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Yeah.
Uh, what data have you populated on people wanting to switch the frequency? Cause I've asked the general public and different various agencies that operate out of here. And overall, I see people that do not want, I have leather, letters from them stating that they don't want the frequency because changed due to when they're flying along, they wanna be able to listen to other airports. The other thing is what people aren't stating is when you talk on the radio, you state what airport you're from. So if you're Ontario, it would be Ontario traffic. If it's Mountain Home, it's Mountain Home traffic. So the person on the radio understands what area that communication is coming from. All I'm saying is, I did, did the research, you, ladies and gentlemen, have the information. You know, I don't wanna turn this into a political insight, because that's the way it seems like, Tom. It's very upsetting for me to understand that you're here. You didn't send a letter officially, right? About a safety concern issue. I've never received an issue from the FAA stating there's a safety issue. And then we're here on a situation like this because of a friendship that you have with somebody? Is that why we're here today having this discussion?
Can I jump in? I don't think this is...
Hang on a second, let's, 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 let's table the rest of this. We'll have, you know, we'll have another discussion, more discussion. Nothing's happening tonight. So no, we're not changing the frequency tonight. Nothing's gonna happen tonight. We'll, we'll have a discussion and maybe we can all get together, have a meeting, and get the data. Cause, go ahead, Councilman Hardey.
I have a series of questions that have come. We have to get through some of the testimony and stuff tonight. But if I can ask those before we get to a point of table. Mr. Mahoney, thanks for coming, obviously. In the process of listening to the, to the Airport Advisory Committee, looking through all the data that's been provided to us, including all the links to other documentation regarding the FAA, I have a series of questions that I hope you might be able to help out with. So the division of aeronautics, are you guys charged with the task of all aeronautic safety, including radio traffic?
It does specify in statute. It just talks about the safety and execution effectiveness of the aviation system in the State of Idaho. The word frequency or radios, technol- it's not mentioned.
But under the umbrella?
It is under the umbrella, yes, sir.
One of the big questions that I have is a lot of the data that we receive reflects perspective and touches on key data from different data points. But there hasn't been a cohesive report that would indicate, define, or refute the fact that we must change. That we're at a point, the Mountain Home U seventy-six is at this threshold, we're approaching this threshold of growth in daily, daily and annual operations that hits this data point that goes, okay, everybody's starting to recognize that this is, this is problematic. We have reports from the FAA, we have inspections from the FAA, the FCC, NTSB, TSA. In all of those reports, or all those like site visits and all those things, like I can't find any specific data from a three-letter agency, including ITD, that says, hey, you have a problem, and this is, this needs to be defined. Is there anything of that nature that we can refer to? And I ask that for a very specific reason, because I know for myself, I'm not a pilot. I've never been certified to be a pilot. I don't pretend to know what the rest of this council has in their experience in that realm. We rely on the feedback of our Airport Advisory Committee quite a bit. They're the professionals in the realm. We rely on people like yourself. So this is where I ask, is there any quantifiable data that somebody could come and put a report in front of us that says, hey, you're, you're reaching this threshold?
Councilman Hardey, I wish I could provide that. AJ touched on it when he made his comparison about NAPA and Caldwell. And said, you know, there was no set threshold. There, there isn't gonna be anybody who comes out and says, this threshold, you should change radio frequencies. To Tom's point, you know, some people just say, hey, I don't wanna change it. I, I don't wanna have to change frequencies. Or I just wanna fly along and listen to one twenty-two eight. Others look at it, and now, since I try to give is just big picture. Just traffic volumes have come up, Mountain Home's in the middle. There are auto frequencies available. The FAA has provided these frequencies, and the process to change is real easy. I don't see hardly any downside other than they get a couple hundred bucks by signs. Other than that, there's really no downside to doing this. On the upside, you get a much clearer radio frequency to talk on. How did I become aware of this? I, I must tell you, I have an acquaintance who brought this to my attention a couple of years ago. I don't really have a, any preference one way or the other down here. I'm just looking at the safety of the situation. And unfortunately, I can't give you any three-letter state or federal agency that's gonna come in and say, you need to do this now. It just doesn't exist. Every situation's a little different. And it's really up, I think, probably to the Airport Manager, the Airport Commission, perhaps, you know, with your leadership about what to do. But I really, I don't know, I think we're making a mountain out of a mullhill, to be quite honest.
Understood. Again, in all of the mountain of information that has, that's been presented to us, there were several links to FAA documentation. One of those, give me just a brief second, I'm trying to find the link that I, that I had for that. It was an FCC doc- or excuse me, an FAA document that, uh, AC ninety dash six six C that talks about, from, from the US Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration Administration, subjecting non-powered airport flight operations. This document was referenced in a significant number of what technical references. A lot of what I deduced from the four instances of the NTSB reports that were, that were sent to us, several of those mention this document. And there are several references in here that, for me, beg the question, are the, is the perception of radio congestion more perception-based than database? And does that factor trump what, what this document is defining prior to takeoff? Traffic verification communications. There's one really specific instance in here. I'm trying to scroll down to, no radio aircraft. There, we don't have a requirement at U seventy-six to even have a transmission or receiver radio to fly into this airport. So that kinda leads me to a number of questions, right? Like, this, this statement in, in this document from the FAA says, pilots should be aware of the procedures at airports without operating control towers. Generally do not require the use of two-way radios. Therefore, pilots should be especially vigilant for other aircraft while operating in a traffic pattern. Pilots of inbound aircraft are not capable of radio communications and should determine the runway and use prior to entering the traffic pattern by observing the landing direction indicator within the indicator, landing, departing traffic, and previously referring to relevant airport locations and by other means. So we do have plenty of scenarios here. We're fortunately situated near a lot of that country. One twenty-two nine is an Unicom in that realm. Again, I, my question is, are we looking at perspectives without data that drives the decision? Because data that drives the decision is what a person like me sitting up here who has no aeronautic background, but knows how to read technical literature? I still have a question where the, where the fault lies in these accidents. And this document in and of itself frequently references that it's the pilot's determination of safety in entering the traffic pattern. It's the pilot's obligation to have line of sight to, to abort the, the traffic pattern if there's an unsafe scenario. And it sounds like in, in these NTSB reports that there's not really that decision being made by those pilots in those instances. So again, you know, I'm, I'm definitely on the, on the page, I think, with the rest of the council, speak to them. But AWAS seems a very logical next step. Changing the frequency, in addition to or separate from that, or as a standalone answer, again, like I, as the layman who has to interpret these things and make a decision, it, it's very difficult to find confirmation in a report that says, Mountain Home, U seventy-six, you have a problem. Is there anything that I can reference?
There is nothing to reference in terms of a hard data point. And I suggest that we flip the script a little bit and make the arguments, why should it stay the same? And I think you find very little evidence, very little support to leave a frequency on one twenty-two point eight when you have so many benefits of switching the frequency. I think if you're looking for data, the one data that is available is that the traffic counts have gone up. We know the traffic is significantly increased. We know traffic out of Boise, Caldwell, Napa is coming here to train. So we're definitely gonna see more congestion. And then it's somewhat anecdotal in that how many times do I wanna talk on radio and I can't because someone else is transmitting? Do we have counsel for that? No, but I guarantee you that's happening a lot more than used to. So in my mind, there's very little downside to switching a frequency and a whole lot of benefit. So that's the way I look at it.
So, yeah, oh, go ahead. Sorry, no, I'll make this one short. So in the, in the operation data that you show from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and then twenty-five days ago, one of the, one of the documents that we were presented with did a look back that was a little farther, going back into the, into the early two thousands. If I remember correctly, cause I'm trying to click through here and figure out which one it was, cause I closed it by accident. One of the, one of the documents provided by, by the Airport Advisory Committee showed that there was actually a significantly higher rate of, of airport traffic here in mid to late, early two thousands. Averaging near the twenty thousand annual operations versus our current seventeen thousand, eight hundred, change, whatever that, that was. I mean, I'm trying to reference off, off memory here. Those, at that, several thousand more operations annually. And this predates the majority of us in this room, unfortunately. My question is if there was that much, if there were that much operational traffic then, and those issues existed then, what would have, what would the such, the situation be if we were at that point today? If we were at twenty thousand? And why, why wasn't it a consideration back then with a significantly higher operation rate? Than we are today with a lower operation rate comparatively?
Yeah, I'd be really curious, cause I haven't seen those data, to understand where they came from. I would argue that operations at Jerome, Gooding, Ontario have definitely grown in that time. And there are flight schools, like you wanna Caldwell, and then certainly out there in Ontario. I am not as familiar with Jerome and Gooding, but the other airports that are on the same frequency, they've definitely gone up. I would argue, when I was here eighty-nine to ninety-two, we had a lot of airplanes, a lot of little airplanes at Mountain Home associated with the base. There was just the character, what was out on the base. We had a lot of people who owned airplanes and were flying them. So that's different. So I don't know, perhaps those numbers are swayed a little bit. Like in our air club, we had a number of people from Singapore that would come up and train in Boise. And so I don't know if that's changed. I, I really can't account for the differences. But my guess is that there was probably an issue then as well, but that I don't know. I'm just not familiar with that data.
Um, I'll, I'll pause for the question. The, the insight that you bring, thank you, I appreciate it. Been the first official in this realm outside of, you know, outside of our locals and our engineer partners that have come to speak on any of this matter. And I do think it's, it's a critical topic, obviously. So I appreciate you coming down today.
I appreciate the council's interest in this. And I must say, I haven't written a letter or anything. I mean, the state tends to not have a heavy hand on municipalities. That's the direction of my bosses. And so, you know, if I need to write a recommendation letter, I'll certainly do it, but typically we don't. This is a city decision about, an airport decision about what to do. I just recommend it, you know, for the expertise of our office in aviation safety. You can talk about things we could, do things we should consider. But if the state has no authority to come in and say, you must do this, no, you can just talk about it and recommend.
Are there any federal agencies, FAA or otherwise, that we could lean on for that data that may be gathering reports?
You know, there's what's called the Flight Standards District Office in Boise. So it is the FAA, it's the branch of FAA that deals with the operations. And perhaps they would have something. My guess is not. The FCC probably wouldn't be too interested in this, but certainly the FAA might.
Counselman Brennan? Right, sorry, I don't wanna rush this. I just wanna get a little question to answer. I've, I've asked two. I'm gonna ask another one, but I don't feel like I've gotten an answer. So Toby, you're on the hot spot now.
Yes, sir.
Your turn. If, if we get a new frequency, is there any need to move forward with the money for an AWAS system? Like, I'm confused on that. I don't, I feel like if the, if the direction of the city were to be whole new frequency, I don't feel like we'd need to invest in the other AWAS, but I might totally off track.
Uh, I, I think you're right in the aspect that it's two, two separate issues. If you were to change frequency, that would, I guess, address the issue that's been brought up. And then the question is, do you wanna use an AWAS that's certified by the FAA? And that goes down another path, and that's, that's really for flight procedures, instrument flights, possibly lower minimums, but not likely. So there's other reasons to get an AWAS if you've already changed the frequency.
The certified AWAS, does it have to stay on the one twenty-two point eight?
A certified AWAS would go on its own separate frequency.
Separate, not even our new traffic pattern, okay.
But if, say, you switch frequencies and you wanted to keep your existing non-certified AWAS, it would move over to your new frequency.
Okay. So we've been operating on a non-certified for a long time? No reason probably?
Yeah. It, that thing has been decertified since twenty twelve. The FAA does not recognize the data.
So, sorry. Does it, does it meet the, the needs, the mission of what it's there for, or no?
Probably as much as your phone does, but I'm not a pilot. But there's no, from the FAA standpoint, there's no, they don't, they put no value in it.
Okay. For the individual pilot, do they put weight in that?
Counselor Brennan, I would say that there is value. Um, if I'm coming, if I'm flying in from Boise or Twin Falls or something, and I'm coming to Mountain Home and I can check in fifteen miles before I get here and find out what the wind is, that's kind of nice. So I kind of plan what runway I'm going to be on or check my alt-ender setting and make sure that's right. But I can't leave it for an instrument flying, it's just visual flying. And if I don't have that ability, well, what you do is, and as mentioned earlier, you just fly over there for it and you look down at the windsock or whatever wind indicator you have, and then you set yourself up to land on the airport. So it is, it is useful, but it's not very useful. It's not very good.
Okay, really quick. So, uh, our chairman said that since that is outdated, that would take all the clicks out, right? If we got rid of it, it'd take thirteen percent of the clicks out of the clicking, right? So our chairman said that we all have the iPads, the cellphones, we can all check the weather, we can all check all that. So isn't that what everybody's doing today anyways? Is for the new technology, the GPS, the, the iPads, the, so we should take it out, get rid of the thirteen percent clicks, and that solves thirteen percent of the issue right now. Boom, right? Hang on a second. Right? Toby, chairman, Tom?
Um, yes, sir. There's like, said, we'd take thirteen percent out, it's a small step.
Okay. I, I just want to provide a, an example of, uh, I guess, my life. And it's not, it is not aeronautic based, but it's working on radio every day on the highway. Okay, so, uh, where I work is, I have the choice to use a channel that we would call Patrol Two, right? And that is, everybody in the Treasure Valley up for our agency, including State Fish and Game and Prohibition, where all officers that are out there, they're all on that frequency. And here in Mountain Home, I can be on that frequency too. I can choose to be on that frequency. But lucky for me, I can choose to be on Bennett Mountain, which is a frequency of my own. Can you guess which one I'm gonna choose? I'm gonna choose Bennett Mountain and be all by myself on the radio for the reasons that are being discussed here. And so, it's, it's not, uh, it's not air traffic, right? Because I have a dispatcher who can tell me if there's an emergency on the other channel and I don't care. So there are differences, and I have recognized that. But I also see the value of being, of being a field training officer, to, to just to have a clear level head to teach somebody else in the car, in the car, and, uh, tell them to turn off all the other radio traffic in Boise because it doesn't matter. So, that's, I guess, that's the example I'd like to give, that's all.
Mayor.
Hang on a second, Counsel, Counselor Brennan.
I, I, I lost my.
Counselor Brennan, Harjo?
One thing I touch on, I'd like to drop to circle back to. Martin mentioned chatter due to training, um, to make his experience at Mountain Home. And on that FAA Doc AC ninety-sixty-six C, the recommended communication practices, subsection four, reads, "Pilots should limit communication on CTAFs and safety essential information regarding arrivals, departures, traffic, load takeoffs, and landings. CTAFs should not be used for personal conversations." Now, understanding like, training of young pilots or novice pilots, you, you have to have the situational awareness and you should be following certain procedures. But, again, is, my question keeps boiling back to, is the perception of, of communication congestion on one twenty-two eight, boiling back down to court practice, but I, like, that, that seems to be a significant factor, not just here, but in the NTSB reports. And in every instance that I could find of, of air traffic issues related to congestion, that it comes back to human error oftentimes. And, and the citation of, of chatter due to training, this statement in, in that FAA report, kind of leads me to believe that human, human choice is a primary factor.
Yeah, Counselor Harjo, I, I would push back on that. The vast majority of pilots do it right. Uh, there might be a very small percentage of people who, um, don't have good radio discipline, and we hear about those cases, but the vast majority of people are doing it correct. And even if you took out those bad actors, it's not going to change the situation here hardly at all. Uh, the situation here is just the fact that you're listening to whatever training is going on here and in Ontario and Weasor and Jerome and Gooding. And, um, I wouldn't think that that, that bad actors have much of an influence. There's actually a little bit more of it on one twenty-two nine, and the backcountry will people chat just a little bit. But they'll get sold, if they talk too much, somebody will get like, like, "I'm usually the one who does that." And I will get on and say, "You guys talk too much," or take it to a different frequency, kind of thing, and school people.
Counselor, Counselor Wardlet.
Yeah, Mayor, I want to say thank you for bringing up the GPS and the iPads. I, it refreshes my memory that I, um, I was talking to my former commander about this, just because he's blown everything he can name to man. And he said, "So as a proponent of safety and not waiting for an accident before you change something, and if the data you provided is a hundred percent accurate, I would vote to change the frequency. As many pilots use iPads in foreign flights when they engage navigation, that the electric version would more than likely be as soon as it was approved to, to change. The old school paper chart guides will just have to ensure they're keeping up data charts in their aircraft and not relying on memory. The charts are new and issued every fifty-six days, so it doesn't take that long to update." So, I, so I worked nine years at Western Air Defense Sector, and I said, "Hey, what if, you know, the guys don't read the, the daily notums? Because, you know, if we had quotas in a certain area and there's restricted airspace, and someone didn't read the daily notums, and they're, they're rated restricted airspace, we scramble our desks on them." And I said, "What about the guys that are, you know, doing their, you know, their due diligence or reading the daily notums?" And he says, "Those type of comments come from immature and inexperienced pilots. But the pilot checking notums is supposed to be part of your pre-flight planning. What's foreign flight is right in front of you, so there's no excuse not to check them." So I just want to point that out, because I, I needed to reach out at this local community to just see other, um, perceptions and opinions on the topic. Um, and the other thing I want to point out as well, I think it would be irresponsible of us not to, or if we heard tonight from the administrator of Idaho Division Aeronautics, who was part of the Idaho Transportation Department, who right here, he's got in his email to you, Mayor, he says, "Our mission is to provide a transportation system that is safe, keeps people engaged moving efficiently and supports the safety economy." I think if we hear his professional opinion tonight on you, we need, as a city, as an airport, we need to change this, not, not maybe, maybe not, like, we should be changing this, and we ignore this, and tomorrow there's an accident because we didn't change it. How about a lawsuit, right? So, I, right now, for me, Mr. Mahoney, I've never met you before, never spoke to you before, this is the first time I ever heard from you did it tonight, hearing from a professional, the means is telling me that we can't change it. So, um, and my request is to show me table this and so, and make it an action item at our next meeting to be voted on.
Counselor, hang on, hang on, let's see, Counselor Wardlet, let me, uh, Counselor Brennan.
I, I, I support that. That's what I was just trying to figure out, we're having this, we're having this in-depth conversation, and this is a non-action item. It just is meaningless to have this conversation if we're not going to solve the problem. And so I support Counselor Brennan's, uh, work on this request. We're not solving anything by leaving this as a non-action item. So I, I, I would like to see it come back, um, to become an action item, to make a decision on this topic. And I, I too, I, I echo what she just said. I mean, we are not the experts here, and it's not for us to, it's us, for us to deliberate and discuss, but we don't know. And, you know, I, I, and this isn't really anything that, that has to do with what you've said tonight, other than, you know, we, or so I, I believe, I've been led to believe, that we are, we're trying to expand our airport. And it's, it's really exciting for me, um, uh, uh, being on council, one thing we did do is that we, we were able to secure another two hundred acres of land. And that's huge. Um, so we can expand our airport, and it's, it's no strings attached. Uh, we, we have nothing around us. And so we have this fantastic opportunity to actually expand our airport with Caldwell being the only relief airport closest to us. And, and Mountain Home really, as far as economic development, that's such a prime opportunity. We have the rail right there. So I'm thinking, like, why wouldn't we go ahead and just do this? Get this whole little thing out of the, knock it out of the way. It, it's so easy, it just, to me, is like, why aren't we giving, why aren't we talking about this? Let's get it done, and if it will help, let's move on with it. Um, so I support Counselor Brennan's work on this request to move it to next meeting if we, if we have other questions answered by then.
Counsel Brennan. Okay, next meeting. Mr. Mahoney, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the, the reports, AJ, and, and.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
I don't think Martin, I think Martin left. There he is. Um, but here we go, four. Let's get down to, uh, action item, new business, uh, uh, number three, deliberation decision on funding and zoning commission recommendation, findings of facts, whether, but preliminary plat of albatross greens with conditions. Counsel, what do you want to do? Counselor Brennan.
To the mayor and councilmen, stand. Citizens.
I'd, I'd like to just jump right in and, and if I could ask you to help me understand that, uh, and, pardon me, I'm just gonna kind of come back in a conversation with the preliminary plat of the UD as far as the, the requested variances. I saw, I, I don't know if I was reading it right, but I, um, I saw a request for a zero foot side setback. Is that the nature of the, um, the townhouse? Just give me, just give me what you got.
Yeah, Mayor, um, Counselor Brennan, yes, that's exactly right. This is a townhouse development, so the zero setback is for those townhouses.
And so, uh, how many, how many attached individual, um, residences will be on, um, on one structure?
I believe they have those set up in, uh, banks of five.
Okay. And does, does five change the nature in which we do, um, EUs? Uh, we had, yeah, it's been a long time ago. We changed something to like four and less and then five and more generally, do you remember?
It, it will not affect these. These will each individually be a single family dwelling unit, and they will be charged as a single.
Individually metered?
Yes.
Okay, so five, five residents, remember, on one structure, but each one of those will sit on its very own, uh, property lot or lot?
Counselor Brennan, that's correct.
And so the zero setback is because they share a lot, literally?
Correct.
Okay. What other, um, variances have they requested?
They are seeking a, a reduction in the, uh, minimum lot size.
To twenty-three forty?
Correct.
From five thousand?
Correct. There will, there will be, um, some of those lots that will be at fifty-three hundred per feet. And those are prices, are generally going to be the, the parcels on the end.
With structures on or like park?
With structures.
Okay. Counselor Harjo, would you, would you be able to pull up a satellite view of the property? Brenda, can you remind me of some cross streets?
Jeffy, you state your answer across from the golf course.
Well, they, who's that? Is that house gonna get demolished or is it staying?
Counselor Brennan, yes, that's correct. They'll demolish the house.
They will, okay. So that, that full rectangle there is what we're talking, even though this is a, is, is the rest of that the floodway that they're talking about? Okay, the bottom.
Correct.
That's why I'm seeing it in such a virginal shape, okay. Were there any other variances other than the lot size?
Uh, what they listed in, uh, yes, so front and rear setbacks were, were variances.
I didn't see the required versus the request.
Sure, if you, Counselor Brennan, if you look at the albatross greens planned unit development agreement, under the Vulcan coverage standards, which would be note nine, um, they will, they write out the minimum lot size, uh, minimum street frontages, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, side interior yard setbacks, and rear yard setbacks, what they exist in that zone, and then their proposed, um, request.
So what's the, the likelihood of this actually going through? Because we get a lot of people that come in and, and do all these plattings, and then you don't see them, and then they don't do something in a certain time, and they gotta be gone for a year. What, what's the likelihood of this actually coming to fruition? You want to speak on it? You guys, this is.
Yeah, very high, very high. They have a complete team here with them tonight, um, so I think they're very serious. Um, they've also gone through an H and H study, uh, which monetarily I think is, is costly. And so they do have, uh, they are serious about the development. But I will let the applicant speak for themselves if, if they like to come up.
We've been working with staff for quite a while, Mayor, uh, to get together the right project. So we're very committed to it, um, and if you have your timelines in your code, we'll comply with it.
Counsel, what do you want to do? Counselor Brennan?
So I can motion to approve, uh, the planning and zoning commission recommendation, finding of facts for the requested preliminary plat, albatross greens with conditions.
Then motioned and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing now, call for question, Counselor Wardlet.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan Harjo?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan? Run down to action item number four, deliberation decision on funding and zoning commission recommendation, findings of facts to rezone to C three PUD and title up, uh, albatross greens with conditions. Counselor Brennan?
One question, um, does staff have any other recommendations or requests for this to be?
Before the PD, um, what was mentioned, um, at, in the beginning, um, but was not present at the time of application, was they did, they were considering a gated community, um, that is not listed on any of the documentations that was at the planning and, planning and zoning hearing. Um, but I don't believe that if that is a route they chose to go, um, it would be a material change, listening to counsel, um, that that would be a material change. So they would have to come back to amend the PUD if that's what they want.
Is there any, uh, um, dedications of parks or anything like this for public space?
Counselor Brennan, this will all be private. It, it will be maintained by an HLA.
So you had a conversation earlier today that some things did get to you before they, they were final. Is there anything on here that, that you're, you're, you're a hundred percent okay with?
I, Mayor, I, I have looked over the code, I've looked over the, the applications. Of course, staff has looked over all their, the departments, you know, water, sewer, streets. And, um, we, we all have confirmed that it meets the requirements, um, and that they're asked to, um, for reductions to vary from the code.
You're okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Counselor Brennan?
The, the fire department has signed off on that.
That's correct. Mayor, uh, within, within, um, the findings of fact, you'll see that they have required a no parking along the roadways. And then one, I believe there's also a, um, fire hydrant requirement within, within the boundaries of the subdivision.
So the, the no parking will be enforced solely by the HOA, not by the city law?
Yeah, but I believe the fire marshal required that those be painted red.
Okay.
Counselor Brennan?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna identify an issue here and please chief sitting right here, I wanna, I'm gonna talk about this because it sounds like it's applicable, but. The uh Paul has helped me understand that we don't have a city ordinance for red zone parking in the city. Uh, so there's there's no prohibition against it in our, in the city and we can't enforce that upon private property. And that is a goal of mine in the next two months to write an ordinance that says red zone is designated as a no parking on public property, you said not on pri, I can't do that on private, right?
More complicated than that, but generally I would say that yes, with private roads open to the public. It could be a requirement or a condition of approval in any subdivision in application that though it's might be a private road. Uh, that'll be maintained by the H O A, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, there's still gonna be a D U Y on that road, there still could be. And so I'm actually writing an ordinance for the City of Eagle right now, that's addressing that very topic of. Private roads that nonetheless are open to the public and how that the nuances with some statutes actually require it to be a public street versus other ones that are. Open to the public, but it could be private like Walmart or something. So you can handle that contractually or you can handle that via an ordinance.
Okay. Um, I'm I'm good with their uh, the fire department's request for the red painted curb, we'll pack that separately.
Okay. Counsel, what do you wanna do?
Uh, Mayor, I just have a quick question.
You bet.
I probably, Chris, I'm probably reading this. Help me out, east, north, and east, north, south. Is nearing capacity, which trunk line is that?
It's the, it's the trunk line that run, sorry, Mayor, um it's the trunk line that runs down eighth and then crosses over.
Down like heading towards like East Calumetry?
Yeah, so it, yeah, East Calumetry, the dance studio, it's in that area there.
Okay.
Um, but we, when we had Air Base Road, or not Air Base Road, American Agent Tor. No, no, sorry, um, we actually put a line, an increased size line, under that road so that we could connect to it. We get capacity, so we've already pre-planned for it, it's there.
Okay.
We just need to connect to it at that point. This will push us there.
Okay.
If we go to um the um, what was the project across from the?
Gulf Horse.
Yeah, Gulfview, if we go to Gulfview, that will push it, this isn't a big enough project to impact it.
Okay, all right. So, but we didn't, okay, all right.
Mayor, Councilman Brennan?
To follow up on that, Gulfview's already been approved.
Right.
So.
That's where I'm going with that.
But is that no, is that no movement?
Have they, have they um surpassed their time for the application period?
Council, Councilwoman Brennan, um, with the PUD, I don't believe there's a time limit restriction within a PUD in and of itself. But that doesn't, but the code does allow for the council to review it at a later date if it does not begin development. I don't think it specifies the timeframe of when we review it, but I I think it was approved in twenty twenty-one. Um, so it it's been out there a while.
So I guess a a legal issue, if a development that we've already approved. Will cause problems on your, your words or Keller's words for that line and a secondary development, application wise, timeframe is coming in. How does that work legally?
For what?
Yeah. So we've already approved a much larger development that Keller and Mr. Curtis say will have a make, will could.
For sewer.
Take us above capacity for that, for that line.
Yeah, I'm, um, this is a sticky issue to be sure, but uh. The way I view that as far as obtaining building permits, et cetera, et cetera, is first in time. When you run out, it's not a matter of a vested right versus, I mean, the fact is, it's just at that level, it's pure capacity. And then public health and safety type issues, so that issue's thorny, uh and that might have to get ferreted out in the courts some someday, but. Uh, there either is or there isn't capacity, that's that. And then you would, I mean, it would be the, upon the developer, they try to demonstrate that the city uh over-approved. Uh, without capacity, et cetera, et cetera, it's it's thorny, but at the end of the day, you either have capacity or you do not.
So just to follow up on that, so what I'm hearing, Paul, what I'm hearing you say is that it's first in right, okay, so obviously they were first, they've done, not done anything. So now we're bringing it back, we are approving another um subdivision currently and if they come, they build and then. The other subdivision decides it materializes, at that point, we could say our wastewater is, does not have the current E D U's, does not have capacity. So you must either do X or Y or Z. We have that availability at that time, do you, well, not, not me.
It's the line.
Well, it's the line, but it's current, it is speaking of E D U's, so that's why I'm saying that, it's wastewater E D U's is what it's talking about.
There. Well. And I think this is gonna jump in where you're at, so uh when I started in this position a couple of years ago, one of the things that Council Brennan had us do was we threw in. To all the findings of fact, on, based on availability of time of building permit, I think this is exactly applicable to that, so even.
Exactly where we're at though.
Doesn't it specify water though and not wastewater?
It's, it doesn't, it it the capacity, well, I'm gonna have to read it, so now I'm, I don't, I don't wanna misspeak. But my understanding is that when we put that in there, it specifically applies to availability of city services at the time of building permit. City services.
That makes it very easy for me later. Uh, but even in, even in its absence, it's a public health and safety type issue.
Right.
However, going to your question is, I do not believe you're at that position at the time to uh. Require an exaction, uh at, you cannot do that. But on this, but there in the, the developer then is in a bit of a pickle because they can't develop. And so it does bring the parties back to the table, so to speak. Uh, but no, you can't compel an exact, an exaction after final.
But it's hard to back to the table at that point to either, hey, help us out or, either way, the city Mountain Home's gonna have to fix that, that line.
Yeah.
Period, if that development materializes.
And all these lots and et cetera, et cetera, this is now, they're city residents at this point, I mean, the lots, then the preliminary plat. It's a citywide problem at that point about providing sewer services.
Okay, hang on one second, everybody, hang on one second, I'm gonna let, uh, coun, sorry, Councilwoman, go ahead, Councilwoman Worklove?
Yeah, thank you, um, Paul and Chris, um, so underneath the decision recommendation from T N Z. Number seven, it says all development regarding this application will be subject to the city Mountain Home's ability to provide municipal water and wastewater services.
That's what I was.
So, I guess this all comes back full circle, right? Will be subject, right, application will be subject to if we can provide it, so. Um, again, like if they come and to get that building permit and we don't have the E D U's available, then they could just, they they couldn't move forward, correct? But we could approve this today, if they don't get to that point, um, to get the building permit, then they could die right there, right?
So the question is, it's not the E D U's, it's the sewer line capacity, who who will upgrade that when that time happens? Would that be the on the, the Gulf Horse comments?
So that falls on to the developer.
Right.
The development has to pay for their development.
Okay.
We're we're requiring right, that right now of a couple of other developments, unfortunately installed a couple of them. But again, our city code says the developer is required to pay those fees because it's for their development.
Perfect, okay. Councilman, uh, Harjo, geez, sorry.
Is is the same, is the same true, um, if there's geographical separation between. The problem point in infrastructure and the on-the-ground growth as platter? If we know that there's an issue that's not contiguous with the, with the development itself? Say if the congestion that we know in the infrastructure exists two blocks down the street.
So this is a couple of blocks down the.
Right, so I'm I'm trying to clarify.
Yeah.
Geographical separation and that still maintains.
True, and we're requiring, I won't say the developer, we're requiring another large developer in Mountain Home to do a project on West Fifth. That is quite geographically separated from their project for this very same issue, capacity and a line.
Which would entitle them to a latecomer type scenario if they have to extend farther than what is their proportionate share of it? Uh, for the development that occurs in between it that benefits from it.
Okay, Counsel, what do you wanna do? Councilman Brennan?
Making a motion to approve planning zoning commission recommendation finding of facts is rezone C, C three PUD, albatross green with conditions.
Been motioned and seconded, any further discussion?
Better hurry.
Hearing none? Hearing none, I'll call up to Councilwoman Garvey. Councilman Harjo?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Worklove?
Aye.
Final comments, Counsel, what do you got?
Mayor?
Councilman Brennan?
Uh, I'd like to, um, request uh, uh consent from the council to have a action item on the next agenda, which would be the. Um, a new ordinance for the, um, um, red painted curb, no parking within the city.
I'm good with that?
All right, I'll go ahead, Councilman Harjo.
Um, real quick reminder, uh, a lot of the community is affected by government shutdown right now, including our, uh, our, uh. Folks out at the Air Force Base, um, the city and the Idaho Food Bank have another food distribution coming up this Thursday, twelve thirty to. Two or two thirty? I think it's two thirty, um, at Optimus Park this Thursday, um, that's free, um, and available all.
T, you got something?
Uh, Councilwoman Brennan, are you gonna draft it? Do you have a draft?
I don't yet, but I'll, I'll take the work on and I'll get it to you just as soon as I can.
Okay.
Yeah, if I can work with Paul on that.
Yes.
All I got, Counsel, is man, uh, parks are wrecked, city staff headed out of the park for Spooktacular, I think this is probably the largest Spooktacular we've ever had. Um, it was amazing and and to all the city staff and to everybody, I know Councilman Harjo was like, anybody that had any hand in it, you guys crushed it. And then the kids just kept coming, it was for two hours, it was steady, well, at five thirty, we're thinking, ah, no, this is gonna be lame this year, but. Six o'clock hit and it was packed, so kudos to everybody, so. Councilman?
Uh, I I warned Chris, I was gonna ask him some questions here at the very end, we almost got by without it, but I have a pre-asked a question, so I apologize for the.
Couldn't be on the spot.
Yeah, I do, um, but so as far as our railroad park uh project that uh I s, I talked about in the agenda in. Uh, the first meeting in November, can you help the council understand, um, the the role of. Uh, the city staff, public works, the laborers, how much involvement they will be with kind of the the unknown amount of. Like the sixty lines on the contract as far as what will per, what we will produce. And tie in like, um, you know, if they weren't doing this railroad park work, what would they be doing in man-hours and. The justification that we can handle it without being overstaffed, I guess.
So, I can't give you a quantifiable, obviously you understand that. I'm gonna tell you it's gonna be a lot like what we did with the swimming pool, with the street department, so the swimming pool, we did that. We still maintain the rest of the city and we had emergencies, we pulled them from that. Um, I can't give you an exact, this is what won't be occurring, cause I don't know that, so. If we have a water main break, which we had a water main break on Saturday, I can't predict that, I can't give you that. But I can tell you that the city services are the number one priority of all the public works department, so if we're out there doing. And I will say what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna be installing sewer lines, main sewer lines, we're not gonna do the intimate plumbing because we're not certified to do that. But we're gonna install a new sewer line, we're gonna install a new water line out there, um, we're gonna do a lot of the prep work for the parking lots. Um, we're gonna do a lot of the prep work and help me tip you on this, cause I'm not gonna be able to remember if they're on the spot, but prep work for the ponds for the the water, um, stormwater. We're gonna do all that and stuff, if the city service comes along that is a priority, we will obviously shift and take care of the city services as a priority. Um, again, like I said, when we were looking at the swimming pool project, we pulled two to three guys from the street department for those projects and we still accomplished everything. Cause I will tell you, you have uh public works city staff, they're all rock stars, they're gonna make everything work. But I can't give you a quantifiable how much time it's gonna take and I can't really tell you what it's gonna form away from. I can tell you right now, um, the guys are gearing up for snow removal stuff. We were hoping October we would be able to dig into this because we knew we wouldn't have snow. My guys are gonna be pulled away, we're predicting a wet winter, they're gonna be pulled away to do snow removal, that would be the priority, I don't know if that's happened to you.
How many snowplows do we have?
So right now, we we have the the two big ones on the dump trucks in the process, thanks to your approval of getting another one. And they have two small pickup mounted ones with, um, Sanders attached, so.
Okay, so two like on a dump truck?
Yeah, dump truck.
Two on pickup and another one on the way.
Yeah.
How much qualified staff do we have to?
Every one of our street department guys is qualified to run them. And then our C D L operators in the water and the wastewater department as well are, so.
Do you know about how many personnel that is?
Ten.
Okay, so running full-time snowplows with their manpower to do hospital patching at the exact same time?
Well, we're gonna do all the hospital patching when there's snow on the ground.
Sure.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm not trying to be funny, but.
Just that the full job of of like street department guaranteed is gonna come first.
Absolutely.
And so what if Guho comes to us, if Guho gets the job? And uh, and says, this is a priority, we're, we're at a dead stop, you know, uh, and we're not informed until you get over here and do this.
The direction I've been given, city services are number one, that is our priority, that's the direction I've been going.
We pull them off the pool, we pull them, sorry.
I'd like to clarify that Guho is the construction manager and they are it, you guys have already approved them. And they're in charge of the subcontractors on the site.
And and if I could throw this out there and just take it from my prior life as a fire chief. This is training we can't get anywhere else, so the city staff, there's a benefit to being able to have these guys go in there and install sewer lines and install water lines. It's not something we get to do on a day-to-day basis, so I see that as a positive for the staff.
And that that is absolutely the job and responsibility of our city public works, even though we contract it out sometimes.
Well, big projects, yeah, we contract it out, the project we're doing in Timblestone, yeah.
But you call it training, but we're still fully trained and certified to get it done?
Absolutely, but again, back to the fire chief and me, my firefighters are fully trained and certified, they're some of the best firefighters in the nation, we still train everybody.
Sure.
And this is, I look at that in that same light.
Meeting adjourned.
Hey folks, you missed out on yelling at, you can yell at a state legislator right now, there he is, yelling, he doesn't even have a shield.
Good to see you, how've you been?